Ms. Holmes, works better that way. Good evening. Welcome to the special meeting of the Titusville City Council on September 17th, 2020 at 5:30 PM. We have a quorum. I'll call this meeting to order. In lieu of an invocation, please join me in a moment of silence. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, would you please read the rules for speaking to council this evening?
Individuals wishing to speak on agenda items must complete a sign-up card and present it to the clerk prior to the item being introduced. Sign-up cards are available on the table in the council chamber. Comments made under public comment must relate directly to the agenda items. No sign-up card is required. And then citizens will be given three minutes to speak on our agenda items.
Thank you. City Attorney, please read the meeting rules for this evening.
The city council meeting may be conducted by utilizing communications media technology as provided in Section 120.545B2 Florida statutes without having a quorum of council physically present in the council chambers. In order to help prevent the spread of the COVID-19 coronavirus and to comply with all local, state, and federal laws and guidelines regarding social distancing and social gatherings, designated seating shall be provided for the public within City Hall. Individual speakers shall, when directed to do so, be given the opportunity to speak on agenda items at City Hall during the meeting in accordance with City of Titusville Resolution Number 162020. Signs held by speakers are permissible, but no tripods, easels, props, or other demonstrative aid shall be brought into City Hall. In addition to the regular broadcast of the council meeting via closed-circuit television and live-stream YouTube video, which may be accessed through the city's website, video and audio of the meeting will also be provided within City Hall for the public in attendance. As an additional method for public participation, the public may submit written comments via email to city.agenda@Titusville.com or by regular mail to City Council's attention at City Hall 555 South Washington Avenue, Titusville, Florida 32796. Written comments must be received by 5:00 PM prior to the start of the meeting and include the sender's name, address, and the subject line must specify the agenda item being addressed. All comments will be disseminated to the council members made part of the public record prior to action being taken. Speakers who appear in person will be subject to screening for symptoms of COVID-19, and any persons exhibiting symptoms of COVID-19 will not be permitted to enter City Hall.
City Manager?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we will conduct the final public hearing on the city's proposed budget for FY 2021. We will read the related ordinances to adopt a final operating and voted debt service millage rate. We'll conduct the final reading of the resolution adopting the schedule of fees for water and sewer, and we'll conduct the final reading of ordinance proposing the FY 21 solid waste rates and adopt the final operating enterprise and capital budgets. Tonight, you will hear ordinance 12-2020, 13-2020, Resolution 28-2020, Ordinance 14-2020, and Ordinance 15-2020, and the City Attorney will read those ordinances now.
Ordinance 12-2020, an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, providing for the millage for the operation of the City of Titusville and voted debt service levy for fiscal year 2021, providing for an effective date. Ordinance Number 13-2020, an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, adopting the general and related budgets of the City of Titusville for the fiscal year 2021, providing for an effective date. Resolution Number 28-2020, a resolution of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending the schedule of fees for water and sewer service by increasing the charges and rates and providing for an effective date. Ordinance Number 14-2020, an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending Section 16116 of the Code of Ordinances by amending and establishing an increase to the residential monthly charge for solid waste and recycling fees and adding a fee for an additional cart, and by amending Section 16117 of the Code of Ordinances by amending and establishing an increase to the commercial dumpster and commercial can monthly charges for solid waste and recycling fees and increasing the commercial dumpster rental fees and providing for an effective date. Ordinance Number 15-2020, an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, adopting the Enterprise Fund and Capital Improvement Program budgets of the City of Titusville for fiscal year 2021 and providing for an effective date. And Mayor, for the public, I just want to let them know that as far as the public hearings, we'll open the public hearings on Ordinance 12 and 13-2020 together, that's the millage and budget, and we'll take cards out of part of the public hearing and then we'll vote. We'll have a separate public hearing and cards on Resolution Number 28-2020. Also be a separate opportunity to speak on Ordinance Number 14-2020 and Ordinance Number 15-2020. So just want to understand, if you want to speak on any of those items, you'll have an opportunity to speak on each of those items as they're handled.
Yes, sir. Thank you. City Clerk, have we received any letters or emails on the subjects, on these subjects?
Oh, yes, sir. I'm aware of one email that was received forwarded to you, and a printed copy was at your, each of your seats there.
The council received a copy of all of them, right? Anyone on council did not receive one?
Who was the email from, so we know that, so the person would know it was received if they're watching the meeting?
Stan Johnston.
Was it Gwen Johnston?
Oh, the email address, Gwendola. Yes, sir.
Okay. Let me just get myself together here. You've read the ordinance staff presentation?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much, and this is the final, again, the final public hearing and the presentation by staff. This is where we're at in the budget process. We began the budget process back in January. Our proposed current millage rate is 7.936 mils, which was adopted on July 28th, which is 10% above the rollback rate. This budget is built on a proposed millage rate of 7.2145 mils, which is your rollback rate. Also, our proposed debt millage rate for this budget is .3147. We conducted a budget workshop on August 12th. We had our first public hearing on September 9th, and this is your second and final public hearing for the 2021 budget. The ordinances have been read by the City Attorney. And this is what Florida statute requires. At both the first and public hearings, City Council must adopt a millage rate before it adopts operating and capital budgets. Public may speak and ask questions before the City Council adopts any of the proposed budget-related ordinances. Back in January, actually in February, City Council had a community engagement meeting, which was facilitated, and the outcome of that meeting was the City of Titusville's strategic goals and objectives. Every item within this budget is related to these five goals or objectives that you developed. Our proposed FY 21 budget, all funds is $126,189,205, and you can see by this pie chart what the breakout is for the all-fund expenditures. This includes your general fund and your enterprise funds. Further breaking it down, our general fund budget, which is $48,051,411, and you can see the breakdown of that, and half of the general fund budget as in years past is about, is approximately 50% of your budget. The FY 21 budget is built at the rollback rate of 7.124 mils, which is 6.56% below the current rate of 7.721. The approved tentative millage rate of 7.936 mils, which was adopted in July, is 10% above rollback, which yields an additional $1.5 million in ad valorem revenue when compared to the proposed, allowing for budgetary flexibility for council throughout the budget hearing process. During the public hearing, council must discuss the percentage increase in millage over the rollback rate, and if any, and because we are at rollback, there are no additional revenues generated, to fund the general fund budget and purposes for which the ad valorem tax revenues are being increased. Additionally, you will hear comments from the public regarding the increase in ad valorem revenue and the millage rate. Staff did a comparison of the area with, cities within our county, what their proposed, what their current millage rate is, their rollback rate, their tentative, and their per capita proposed. So you can see, let me show you on the next slide, where the city sits with the 2021 proposed budget per capita citizen for the ad valorem taxes. You'll see that we're third from, the third lowest within the county. I'd like to break out a single-family homesteaded property with a value of $159,942. Out of that, the Brevard County schools get approximately 35.24%, or $801. The City of Titusville gets 36.38 for approximately $827.78. In Brevard County, 19.60% or $445. Additionally, the city has operating MSTUs for our recreational district. One MST1 is $59 or 2.60%. The North Brevard Recreational District capital is $57.29 for 2.52%. And then the St. John's River Management District, 1.10% yielding $25. That's at the rollback rate of 7.2145. At your tentative rate, which again is 10% above rollback, this is what your tax house During the budget process, there were some changes from the original budget that we proposed to council. Our state revenues, we built the budget at 20% of a decrease in state revenues. They actually came in a little higher than anticipated. So that, plus, we found that the contract, or the contract for the school resource officers was increased in value of $162,000. So with those additional adjustments to the state revenues, there's $465,616. In the next couple, in the next slide, we went through this during your budget workshop as well as your first hearing. This is the proposed way that staff has recommended that additional revenue be added to the proposed budget. We're proposing a 2% COLA adjustment to all employees. I'd like to purchase a generator at the Harry T. Moore Center that's out. It does not work. It's not functioning. 20 body cameras for our law enforcement, sworn police officers, and additional half-a-mile roadways for total of $465,616. Additionally, out of your operating capital for our funds, our enterprise funds, this is what the COLA looks like, and it is absorbed. It's not out of your general fund from the operating capital. Onto proposed utility rate changes. There are no increases proposed to stormwater management utility for a single-family home. For our solid waste collections, we're proposing a 1% increase in refuge for residential, which is approximately $1.44, and a 3% increase in recycling for FY 21, which is an annual impact of .36 for residential pickup. This is where the city, where stormwater rates lie. You'll look at the state average. We're well below the state average and kind of right in the middle of the rest of the cities within the county. The state average is the third from the right. For our solid waste, this is a single-family solid waste rate comparison. You'll see the city's current is in red and the city's proposed is in green. Now, the other cities are going through the same budget process that we are right now, so we anticipate that they will also increase their rates, and we will probably wind up sliding a little bit further to the left as a result. Solid waste commercial, one of the lowest in the county, Melbourne being the only other city that's lower than us. In a comparison of the increase for the 1% in water rates for a residential 3/4-inch meter at 5,000 gallons of usage, the monthly increase is 83 cents. For a commercial monthly bill for a 3/4-inch meter for 5,000 gallons of usage, the increase is $1.3 per month. And finally, a typical commercial with a large meter, 1.5-inch meter, with a proposed 42,000 gallons, will see a $7.28, or $7.28 increase monthly. In our water rate comparison chart, you'll see the two in the middle with the yellow in there. The current is the one to the left, and the one immediately to that is the one to the right. Water is depicted in the dark, dark blue, and sewer is depicted in the purple. You'll see that we are right in the middle and average for the cities we compared ourselves Next is the proposed actions by council. The approved tentative millage rate generates an additional 1.533928 over the proposed rate. That's at your 10% over the rollback which we're proposing. The options is to adjust the millage rate to fund the city council budget, make any modifications, fund additional needs, and/or a combination of both. Now, remember, that is, that 1.5 was built at 7.9, which is 10% over. Our proposal is 7.2145, which is the rollback rate, and it generates no additional revenue. City Council actions, we have read the related budget ordinances and resolutions. Mayor, you'll be opening the public hearing on the related ordinances. City Council will deliberate, and we hope to end the meeting at...
Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir.
Would you do me a favor and bring up that current rate comparison for water, again, that chart?
The rate comparison between the, oh, the water, I'm sorry. Yes, sir. Sure thing. Right there.
Okay. At the last meeting, several people got up and asked why the water rate's so high, and I said, I can't, I explained it to you then. I was gonna have, I was thinking, and I did it, to have a graph put up on it. You see the yellow part on that graph? That's sewer. The water is below it, the two darker ones, and if you drew a line across just about everything in Brevard County, the water cost is more than ours. We're kind of in, in the middle, maybe a little upper middle on the sewer, but everybody thinks it's the water, and it's not the water. Some years ago, we had to, we had, before I got here even, that's a long time, by the way, we had to put up a sewer plant at the behest of the government, and it cost the, I don't know the amounts, but it was in the millions and millions, or we were gonna get fined. So we did, but that was a burden that we've been bearing for 20 years, actually. It's up next year, the payments on that will be over. So at that point, we will be coming back down, and hopefully, everybody will realize that it was the sewer, it wasn't water. And for those of you that would like to look at that further or show it to your friends, if you want, I made some copies, and they'll be available with the city clerk anytime you want, anytime you want to come up and get them. Thank you, sir. We're ready to go?
Yes, sir.
All right. I'm gonna open the public hearing on ordinances 12-2020 and 13-2020. Clerk, do we have any cards on this?
Yes, sir. We have six individuals altogether for both ordinances 12-2020 and 13-2020. The first...
Please call the cards.
Yes, sir. Russ Bausch.
Russ Bausch, I live in, on Audrey Drive in Titusville. Lived there for about 30 years. I've lived in Titusville for over 50 years. First of all, I want to appreciate, I want to compliment or appreciate the remarks made by Vice Mayor Diesel last week, particularly encouraging people to become involved in this process. As I indicated last week, I'm kind of learning all this and how it all works. I've been studying the budget process. I've been doing some reading in addition to the Florida statutes. One thing I want to point out tonight is that I looked at the 264-page report, budget report that was prepared by the city manager in July, or dated July, anyway, and I was very interested in the first 10 pages of his transmittal letter. So you guys have mentioned that you consider these folks experts, and you've complimented them, and I certainly agree with all of that. And in light of that, in considering the 10-page letter that the city manager wrote, I'd like to just point out a couple of things that were in that 10-page letter.
Sir, may I correct you on one point? I don't think I ever called myself an expert on this.
No, no, no. I meant your staff.
Oh, well, staff...
The comment was made by council to staff.
Okay. That was unclear.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So the staff, or the city manager in his transmittal, letter of transmittal, recommended that the budget be, was balanced on page two of his letter, that the budget would be balanced at the rollback rate of 7.2145 mils. Also on page two, that the proposed budget levies the tax rate that's necessary to maintain basic service levels, continues the road paving program at current levels, and continues to address liabilities. On page three of that letter, he says that the proposed budget emphasizes financial stability through continuing to address long-term liabilities, ensuring revenues are properly aligned with expenses, continues to address the critical infrastructure needs, including roads and essential equipment, and investing in employees with budget constraints, within budget constraints, excuse me. Also on page three, the proposed budget supports our priorities of continuing to meet and reduce long-term commitments of debt service, excuse me, debt service. And finally, I am submitting to you a budget that funds service levels necessary for city operations and address the city's most critical capital and infrastructure needs, using the five-year plan FY 21 and 22, operating budgets with a zero increase in operating. Given all of that, and it appears to me that they're saying, these, these experts, these people that are, that we all agree are doing a great job, are saying that the rollback rate funds the services, the critical needs, the infrastructure that we need. And so I'm asking you to adopt the rollback rate for the millage this year. Thank you.
I don't, we did, we did.
No, sir, you haven't yet. You've adopted a tentative rate of 10% above rollback.
That's what he was talking about, the rollback rate. Next card, please.
Stuart Buchanan.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Stuart Buchanan. I'm a Titusville resident. I appeared last week, and I shared with you my thoughts, and so I'm gonna be brief this evening. I have brought with me some other Titusville residents, including small business owners, some of the new Kennedy Space Center engineers that have chosen to make ties with their home. And although the email did not go through the city clerk, each of you should have received an email from Lieutenant Scully, retired from Brevard County Sheriff's Department, representing retired law enforcement. So as I shared with you before, Titusville was the home of thousands of Kennedy Space Center employees, and I would very much like to see this become the home of the new generation of Kennedy Space Center employees, include that. The city flourished when that was the case, not just in our two country clubs, our two malls. It created jobs for all the people that didn't work out at the Space Center, and that is the scenario that I would like to see again. And we're so close. You've focused, you've concentrated on your downtown. We've revitalized the downtown. We've redeveloped it so that it, you know, it's the same sort of redevelopment that occurred in Cocoa Village, that occurred in downtown Melbourne. You've approved new subdivisions so that we now have new homes for these families to move here. And so the only thing that we're really lacking are the two things that I shared with you before. Mike... My concerns about bringing up the fire and police pension funds to where they need to be, so you don't have any unfunded liability, and then also supporting your roadway infrastructure. One of the things that, when you talk about rollback rates, and you say that the rollback rate addresses the budget needs, that's true, but it doesn't account for things like your unfunded capital projects, because you don't have the funding necessary immediately to repave those roads, to replace the, whether it's stormwater, potable water, sewer, the infrastructure in the ground that's 40 years old. All those things are ticking time bombs. I worked for the county for over 20 years. I was responsible, and as their capital projects administrator, sure, we had a budget, and we sat there with our fingers crossed and hoped that nothing went wrong with our major capital items. And that's why I'm asking you to adopt the higher rate of 7.93. I did go and pull my tax bill, the one that's sent out by the tax collector. Should you adopt a higher rate, my taxes go up a whopping $18.04 for this year. I think I can handle that. I really support the city. I would very much like to see you adopt the higher rate. Let's stop kicking this can down the road. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, sir. Next card, please.
Jason Reichman.
Name and address for the records, sir.
Hi. My name is Jason Reichman. I live at 3 Indian River Avenue, right down the road. And I'm just here because Stuart asked me to come in and speak as, you know, a member of this community and a business owner. And so I'm in support of... It's funny to say this, because my whole life, I'd say I'd never want higher taxes. I don't want higher taxes. But if it's a minimal increase, and it's gonna make this city a little bit better for, you know, our police and our fire and our roads and our entrance ways into the city, to make this a little bit more attractive and usable for people coming through, then if it's a minor increase, then I'm just here to support that notion.
Thank you, sir. Next card, please.
Alex McNitt.
Thank you, and good evening. I'm an engineer out at the Space Center. My name's Alex McNitt. I'm relocated here from Los Angeles about four years ago. There's about 30 or 40 peers, friends, coworkers that also work out at the Space Center.
Your address, sir.
What's that?
Your address.
Oh, it's River Edge Drive, 4989.
Thank you.
River Edge Drive in Hidden Coves. Really love the water. Really love Titusville. Out of those 30 or 40 friends and peers, I was only one of two people that actually chose Titusville to relocate to rather than other areas. In the last few years, I've seen a definitely improvement, a large improvement. But I also agree and support the last two speakers, the points they made, because I think it would continue to accelerate the trend in that direction. Four engineers that are relocating here, the work at the Space Center would probably choose Titusville over other areas more likely, given some of the things that were just mentioned. That's all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next card, please.
Trenton Mansfield.
I'm Trenton Mansfield, 1585 Penn Tax Avenue. I'm against raising taxes. I am for the rollback rate. I, too, work for the government, worked for the state of Florida, worked for the Department of Corrections for the last 14 years. And there is always, always, always waste within a budget. Always. You can always find places to cut, always find places to cut, whether it be the whatever paper. There's always room to cut. And government is always good at spending other people's money. Live within our means. We're in a pandemic right now, COVID-19. Go with the rollback rate. I don't understand why we want to raise taxes. Not saying y'all haven't voted or anything yet, but I don't understand why we're wanting to raise taxes so much. It's only $18 on his bill, but he may be able to afford it, but other people may not be able to afford it right now because of the pandemic that's going on. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next card, please.
And Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, 860 Point Set Avenue. This is two items. Is this, is this three minutes, or is this six minutes, or how is it counted?
Three minutes.
Three minutes only? Okay. Well, I'm sorry about that, because I was hoping... But I'm against these two items that I would like you to consider what Stuart was talking about. He's talking about $6 million unfunded liability, something like that, for police and fire. Well, it's $65 million unfunded liability when you include the other pensions. $65 million. And this, there was bankruptcy discussed, and I believe it was in February 2018. 27 minutes, council discussed bankruptcy. And that was the word, bankruptcy. So I think that the city should consider what's going. As far as the aggressive payment towards this unfunded liability is that in the notes that you've had on the other meeting, previous meeting, it said that we're doing an aggressive payment to the trust fund of about $1.5 million. That doesn't even pay for the interest. So it's not aggressive. The recommendation, I believe the recommendation was for over $3 million. So we're not doing that. So we're in, we're in kind of trouble. And let me explain some. We talked about the 14.7 million was listed up there. We also have the $65 million, and we have $20 million was mentioned about the possibility of repairs and replacement of only just the sanitary sewer downtown area. That was just mentioned by the city manager at one time. So we've got problems, and I believe we need to be honest about it. As far as the... That's another issue, and that is the failure to have floodways maintained, and there's some dishonesty involved in what the city is doing. So in the issue about the floodways, I've shown this to you a number of times, and that is that we have five of six floodways that are choked with vegetation. The question I have asked city is that what... Where is the water gonna go when silt builds up more, vegetation builds up more? Where's the water gonna go? And of course, nobody answered that question, because it's an admission of serious guilt of that we're not, we're not following our FEMA regulations.
Your time is up, sir.
May I have more time? I guess not. Thank you.
Next card, please.
No more cards, sir, on these two ordinances.
I'm sorry.
I guess that was it.
That was it? Okay. I didn't hear what she said. All right. With that, I'll close the public hearing on 12-2020 and ordinance 13-2020. I'll open it for council discussion. I see no discussion. If somebody would like to make a motion, I guess, it would be in order.
I think I have a light on.
Yes, sir. Just as a reminder, our proposed budget is a rollback rate of 7.2145, and our proposed debt millage rate is .3147, and that should be part of your motion. And the additional items that we discussed, that as the state revenues came in higher, and the adjustments were made to the school resource officer contract, the additional adds that we had to the original proposed budget is, should be part of that amendment as well.
Right.
All right. These are my thoughts. This is a bad year to raise rates, raise taxes. I think there are people out there that are having a hard time. I know there are people out there having a hard time. I understand Mr. Buchanan's suggestion of let's figure out ways to make our city more inviting, but I just don't think this year is it, and I'm not real sure next year is going to be it. So with that in mind, I would move to adopt ordinance number 12-2020, providing for a millage rate for the operation of the city of Titusville at 7.2145, and a voted debt service levy for the fiscal year 2021 at .03147 mills.
Second, in addition, right?
Zero. I don't think you said that correctly. Yeah. 0.3147. You said zero.
Yeah. .03147.
Correction, .3147.
.3. Okay.
All right. All right. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Yes, sir.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Brian, I just want to clarify, that is the rollback rate. Is everyone understood?
All right.
And that generated no additional revenue? So there's no...
Incidentally, if anybody...
We're trying to be legal here.
If anybody wants to speak, please hold up your hand, because this is not working. Your light, or put your light on. I'll notice your light if you do. But so we, with that, we have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
I'll open the public hearing.
That was cards on this item?
Excuse me, sir. Ordinance 13.
Yes.
A public comment was collected together with ordinance 12.
Okay. All right. So there's nothing specific to 13. Okay. There's no adjustment. I'll close the public hearing then, if there's someone to speak, and open for council discussion. Somebody got their hand up? You can do a discussion or a motion if you want.
And I apologize, I can't... My vision is a little scrawly.
This isn't telling me who's turning on their lights now.
We're not doing good. I would move to a resolution, our number 28-2020.
This is ordinance 13-2020, the budget.
I thought we did that.
We just did the millage, which was ordinance 12. We have a separate vote on 13.
Excuse me, then. Move to approve ordinance number 13-2020, adopting the general and related budgets of the city of Titusville for the fiscal year 2021.
And I'd like to add to that the additional $465,000 of consideration to the general fund.
Please. Yeah.
And how we're spending it is in your slide packet as described in my presentation.
As described in the presentation.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. The next item is open public hearing for resolution number 28-2020. Are there any cards on this item?
Yes, sir. We have four cards on resolution 28-2020. The first is Russ Bausch.
I now want to speak out of the issue.
All right, sir. Next one.
Amy Burns.
Hi.
My name is Amy Burns. I live on Mason Drive in Titusville, Florida. I appreciate the chart that you guys had for water. I come from a utility family, so I'd like to put some numbers to the visual.
Ma'am, for purpose of this, you can take down your mask.
Oh, okay.
Makes it a little hard to hear.
Okay. So, yeah, as a, as a family of four, we generally use about 4,000 gallons of water a month. And what I found on Titusville's website was basically your block size is five, so basically, you know, we're paying $3.30 per thousand gallons for the first 5,000 gallons, and I'm gonna move on to other utilities here. We actually moved here about almost four or five years ago. I can't remember. Gosh, time flies. And when we moved here from Orlando, our water bill doubled. I mean, it was like, it was definitely sticker shock. If, for, oh, you see, their, their block size is three for the first 3,000 gallons, and then for their next block, it's 4,000 gallons. So we would be in block two, and their price is $1.15, or, well, if you round up, $1.16 per thousand gallons. So there's definitely a significant difference in price. If you look at Orange County Utilities, their first 3,000 gallons is $1.19 per thousand. For the first 7,000, it jumps, after 3,000, it jumps up to $1.66. Still, significant difference in price. If you look at GRU, which I believe is Gainesville, for the first 4,000 gallons, it's $2.47. If we look at Seminole County, it's $1.21 for the first 10,000 gallons. So if you look at Toho, which is Osceola, it's $0.56 for the first 2,000, and then after that, for the next 3,000, it's $1.94. So Winter Park, it's $1.24 per thousand gallons for the first 4,000 gallons. So, you know, I could, I could keep going. Lakeland, it's $2.23 for the first 7,000 gallons. So, you know, this, as she had, as this lovely lady here had said, you know, this is a tough time, COVID. You know, it's, it's already difficult enough for some people to pay their bills, and now come next month, a lot of people are losing income. And so, you know, raises don't seem like a lot, but they can be a lot. If you don't have a dollar, it might as well be a million, right? So I propose to not raise. Thank you.
Ma'am, if I can, a lot goes into water. Different areas have different rates for multiple reasons.
Right, right, right.
I would urge you, though, to get a copy over there that I mentioned.
I did. And this is strictly in regards to water price. This is not sewage or anything else.
But what I'm saying, you're, you're, you got sewage on that, no?
Oh, yes. I'm comparing just the water costs, not the sewage, just the water part.
Okay. Well, again, there's a lot of things that go into it.
Sure, of course.
I wish we could do more, but it's based... We have a study done every year as to what it has to cost us, not only to produce the water, but to keep producing the water replacement and so forth and so on.
I understand.
So I thank you for coming up, and I'm sorry we can't do more for you.
Thank you.
Next card, please.
Susan Canada.
Good evening.
Susan, Susan Canada, 2299 Heritage Drive, Titusville.
Thank you.
And thank you also for this, Walt. It shows a lot on it, the paper. But right now, there's a painful impact of America's expanding water poverty. This is not only hurting the poorest, but also working Americans. Water should never be treated as a commodity or benefit of the wealthy. There are federal programs to help with energy and telecom bills, but nothing for water. I did a bit of research, and a few people I knew from different TV stations helped me a little bit on this, but so far in Philadelphia, there's a tiered assistance program called TAP. It was created, and it's based on a person's ability to pay. TAP enrollees will see their water debt wiped out if they make so many payments on time, and of course, at the reduced rate. Also, other areas have set up funds to help customers struggling with their water bills. And I realize Titusville has set up different payment systems for people that may be behind in their water, which is great, instead of putting liens on their houses and taking their homes. But at the same time, with many people right now out of work, and I've met more cancer patients when I see my oncologist than I thought I'd ever see, and they're on limited budgets right now, because everything's gone up for them also, what may seem like $3 or $4 to one person, as the one young lady just said, if you don't have it, it's not there. I'd appreciate... I'd appreciate it if all of you could try looking into different ways, aside from raising the water, or if you do have to raise it, some way of taking it down even during the year. And Walt, with this chart you gave us, the comparison, and I'm having a little trouble reading a few of the cities, 38 again this year, so it's a little hard reading, but Titusville's in the middle on the water. And with that, I noticed that the New Smyrna Beach, the City of Vero Beach in Orange County, and also the City of Orlando are way below us in water prices. Why can't we study what they're doing and try to get Titusville's water down? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
And sir, just to remind council, we don't know what their water rates are going to be. These were the rates prior to them going through their budget processes.
That is correct. That contains next year's rate as well. Most of those others do not. So there are some that are close, which may turn out more than what we are at this point. Thank you for reminding me of that, sir. Okay, next card, please.
Yes, sir. The last speaker on this item is Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, 860 points at Avenue. I don't know what's going on here. I really don't know. In other words, you just passed the millage rate and general related budgets, but now, what we're going to do is we're going to go over enterprise funds and capital improvement programs for the city, whether they approve that, and these other items, which would affect the millage rate and the budgets. So I guess I'm, maybe I don't understand what's going on, but it seems like it makes no sense at all, the way my thinking. You know, I can be wrong, but how can we pass these first two items when it appears to me the next three items relate to the millage rate and so forth and the budgets? It doesn't make any sense to me. What are we doing? So I'm hoping that you can answer this, respond to me, because generally what we do is have a code of silence. I ask questions, you don't answer them. I think you should answer that question. It doesn't make any sense to me what you're doing tonight. Absolutely no sense. So maybe somebody, maybe Bridget can explain it or somebody. But on this particular 28, I have a number of, I'm disturbed about the mismanagement, destruction of water wells. The city should, should, should admit that the wells, the well field, South Well Field, is not working at all, that we've invested 10 million, maybe 15 million, and it's, all went down the tubes, the toilet or whatever. So there should be some admission of mismanagement, over pumping a well, and that the city is going through. And not only that, is that there was a mention about whether we had a penalty. Well, by and call, we had a penalty, millions of dollars of penalty. So, because we didn't, we didn't operate, we didn't, we didn't meet deadlines. So we have problems in mismanagement of the water field with Mr. Stauffer's doing, and I have problems with Mr. Stauffer. But I would like you to answer that question. I certainly oppose what's going on. I oppose what you're doing. So please consider and see if you can make, explain to people here how you can possibly pass these two and two items, above items that you did, and then consider the other three, which appear to me to be strongly related to them. How could you do it? I don't know. So I'll let it go on that, and hopefully somebody can, can, can give a reasonable answer as to, because if we change these other three, how's it, it appears to me it's going to influence the other ones. Thank you.
Time is up, sir. Ms. Connaughton's, I think I know...
They're unrelated. It's general fund versus enterprise funds.
Okay. You got your answer? Next card, please. Sir, don't talk for me, audience, please.
I'm sorry, sir, there's no more cards on resolution 28.
Okay. I'm trying to find it where I want it. Which one was that? I'm sorry.
We're on resolution 28, 2020, which is amending scheduled fees for water sewer services.
I'll close the public hearing. Counsel's discussion or motion?
Mayor, I'll do a motion, although I do want to say, I understand that water and sewer is going to be hard on a number of folks. Unfortunately, we have to continue to improve the system. So I would prove, move to approve resolution number 28 dash 2020, amending the schedule of fees for water and sewer service by increasing the charges and rates.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, vote, please.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. I'll open the public hearing on ordinance 14 dash 2020. Any cards on this item?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, I'm catching up. We have two cards. The first is Russ Bausch.
Thank you, sir.
And the other is Stan Johnston. Mr. Johnston.
Is it just 14, or is it 14 and 15?
Ordinance 14.
14, 14. Ordinance 14, I'm for this. I was opposed to everything else, but I'm for this one. And I want to mention is that I didn't know that solid waste was enterprise. Is it really enterprise?
Yep.
Solid waste is enterprise. Okay, I'm wrong about that. And then capital improvements, capital improvements, does that mean just capital improvements for enterprise? Is that what that means? Okay, because in other words, there's not capital improvements for the other issues. Okay, so just enterprise, okay. So, so there, that's an explanation to me, is that all these other ones are enterprise, which I didn't know the solid waste was an enterprise fund. I really didn't know that. So thank you for that correction on that, and I, so it does make sense what you're doing on the passing of the two. Now, on ordinance number 14, I approve that because I think that the city's doing fantastic under Kevin Cook, just really fantastic. Now, I'm going to ask, okay, I guess I'm going to have to do 15 also, that, that, I just want to praise, praise our solid waste program, that they've just lowered costs and the programs they've entered with, for example, the waste containers being among the first in Brevard County to, to implement that program, and doing a successful job in the, and as far as moving like trees when you cut them down and so forth. It's just fantastic. I just don't think it, anywhere in the county can be compared to what the city's doing. They're doing a fantastic job. So I do approve this ordinance 14. And I thank you, thank Mr. Cook for doing a good job, and the city for doing a good job on that. Very responsive. And if you see trash out the road where it's not picked up, I believe it's because people aren't calling it in. And you're not supposed to pick it up unless it's called in. So I don't know what you can do about that, but, I mean, I see waste in front of some people's houses, been there for, for two weeks at a time, because they just don't call it in. That's, I believe that's the explanation. So thank you very much. Thank you for the good service for the solid waste. Thank you. And thank you for the explanation, Bridget, about the enterprise.
Okay, no further cards?
No, sir.
Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing on number, ordinance number 14, 2020. Open it for council discussion or a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number 14 dash 2020.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, vote, please.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes, passes unanimously. Next item is, I'll open the public hearing for ordinance number 15 dash 2020. Are there any cards on this?
Yes, sir. One card, Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, 860 points at Avenue. I'm opposed to this enterprise funds and capital improvements programs, and I'm thinking in, I thought it also related to the general fund too, as far as the, for example, cleaning of floodways and so forth. So that's what I, what I had been saving for. Will I be allowed also to speak on petitions from the, petitions? That's a question I feel like I should answer. In other words, maybe I should change where I'm going to talk, if you're going to say I can't talk petitions from the public. I mean, it's there. So I'm going to assume that you're going to allow me to talk on petitions from the public, even though I've talked about all these items, because it's there on the agenda item. Okay. So I'm going to say that you're going to let me. So, so as far as the enterprise funds, I am opposed to this, and in particular, for the mismanagement that I've explained to you on, on the water resources, the over pumping of the wells, failure of the city to admit numerous errors, and it's just a number of things going on, like for example, water resources has, has had some dams put up, dams that illegally flood private property, city won't admit to it. There's a lot of, let's say, mischievous dishonesty by council, by city manager, by even the city attorney regarding these issues, and which, for example, relates to the dishonesty about this $70,000 report. So I'm opposed to this, this particular item number 14, 15, and I'm with the expectation that I'll also be able to talk on item two. I'll, I'll cut it short right now, and with the expectation that you will allow me to also speak on petitions and requests. Thank you.
No further cards?
No, sir.
I'll close the public hearing, open for council discussion or a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number 15 dash 2020.
And sir, if I, if I could, as part of your motion, the additional funding considerations, which is a 2% COLA for all the enterprise funds?
All right, inclusive of the 2% COLA.
Vice Mayor? I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, vote, please.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Next item is petitions and requests. Anybody wish to speak?
Yes, I do. Thank you. Stan Johnston, 860 points at Avenue. My wife has put in some information. She's asking for a number of things, I know, and I'm, I'm also asking for these things. Things is that I'm very disappointed about the malicious dishonesties towards me regarding a $70,000 report that says I'm a stupid worthless engineer comes out. It's, it was by Mr., Mr., our mayor says that it's been done by GeoSynTech. GeoSynTech denies doing it. There's no 2019 report. Records manager says there's no report, there's no contract to do the work, and yet all of council members support this. This is incredible malicious dishonesty by you, and so I'm asking for the termination of our city manager. I'm asking for the resignation of all council members, so this includes Mr. Diesel also and Mrs. Stokel, because it's completely dishonest. So I want you to understand that. I mean, I'd like to be, let's say friendly, but by goodness, this is, this is attacked upon me, my profession that I worked at for years, that I've prepared my lifetime, and it's an attack against me, and it's vicious, it's malicious, and it's untrue. So understand is that you need to, what you need to do is get rid of your city, our city manager, and if you can't, if you can't, can't be truthful, you need to go ahead and resign. And that goes for also Mr. Jordan and so forth. So you've received this from my wife, and it's, it's not very nice. Let me say that under our top city leaders, my hometown of Titusville, which I love very much, is no longer the space coast capital of the world, it's rather a space coast capital of closed doors, malicious dishonesty, police harassment, and nonsense. So that's what we're living under right now. And I don't want my children, my grandchildren to undo this, and I think it's unfair to our city employees, who have to, some of them have gang orders, they won't talk to me, and you have closed doors. So this, this is, how do you say? It's just horrible. It's horrible. You have no business doing that. I ask myself the question, where'd you get your education? If you go to church, what good does it do you? When you have this, this malicious and vicious dishonesty that says I'm a, that you have this report that says I'm a stupid worthless engineer? And yet, I don't have it. I've asked for it, it doesn't exist. So you need to straighten up and ask what you're doing.
Your time is up, sir.
May I have two more minutes?
No.
Thank you.
Sir, if I may, I'd like to thank our staff for this budget that started in January. It was a very challenging budget to put together based on the uncertainty of state revenues and other, other factors that we just didn't know what were going to happen. Staff adjusted. We did a tremendous job of presenting this budget, and we're hopeful that next year will be better for us.
Excuse me, sir, keep your voice down. There's a meeting going on here.
And hopefully, as Member Nelson said, that next year may be as challenging or even further challenging. So applaud the staff, I think they did a wonderful job, and we appreciate council support as we enter into budget year 2021.
Well, I'm sure everyone up here would second that. We appreciate the job you've done, and all of our staff is just incredible. We've gone through some tough times together over the last 14 years, and most, most of you have been here during that.
You're not standing up. I'm asking you an issue. Okay, I don't think it's security.
City attorney?
He's asking...
My wife's in it, and I don't see a person.
You're disturbing this meeting, sir. Please find your seat.
He's disturbing the meeting.
You, sir, find your seat.
I'll stand up back here.
A little childish, isn't it?
Well, I think you should recognize my wife's petition.
I believe his comment to me, which I'll relay to the council, the email that we recognized at the beginning of the meeting, where we say we'll acknowledge emails, it'll be part of the record, was labeled, I believe, for petitions and requests, and he wants to make sure that you understand that the email that came from, I believe it's Gwen Johnston, was to be included under the petitions and requests, and that each of you has received it as such.
No response.
Take it up with staff, please. It's not for this meeting. Again, thank you all, and particularly you, Bridget. This has been a very, very difficult year. I totally agree, and I'm sure everybody up here does, and all of your staff have done an excellent job in putting everything together and meeting the desires of most of the community. So thank you. Any, I think that's all we have. Anything from council? I'm not hearing anything else. I'll declare this meeting adjourned.